Okay folks, I want to call the Hopington Special Town Council meeting of November 25th, 2019 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation, where God, in his wisdom, governs and judges all. Okay, just a couple of housecleaning items. The hearing is going to last from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., no later than 10:00 p.m. The applicants have five witnesses to testify tonight. A land use consultant, the applicants themselves, an engineer, a forestry expert, and an appraiser. We may not get to public comment phase of the hearing because the applicant, unless we get to all five and the councils concluded their questions to the applicant, so I just want to get up front on that as well. We will not close the hearing until a public comment is acknowledged, so just so you know. Without further ado, Mr. Sirda, the floor goes to him.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Steven Sirda. I have offices here in the local area and had the pleasure of appearing before different aspects of the government of the town of Hopington in prior vision. As the board, everyone in the audience likely knows, we're here tonight regarding property located in 201 Chaysell Road. Specifically, we're asking for a zone change on that property, which is currently RRA, Rural Residential, to commercial special for the purposes of locating a solar use on that facility. We are also asking for an amendment to your future land use map that would accompany that. The project, the property itself, is 23.3 acres approximately, and ultimately, our solar project is going to be approximately 21.1 acres. The proposed field has a generating capacity of 3.3 megawatts DC. There was a little bit of a discrepancy there, which I think we can clear up on the procedural end. And we are, we are describing the fenced-in area, which is the array, or including the buffer zone in between that. And we will have a total of 13.1 acres that will be utilized for both the array as well as the fence that is required under your ordinance around the same. The proposed array, or the conceptual array that we have put forward for this council, and will be discussed tonight, meets all of the setback requirements and buffering requirements of the ordinance at the time that this application was filed. It's important, I think, to remind the members of the public, as I'm sure the council knows, that this project is governed under your prior solar ordinance and it's not under the current ordinance. It's under the ordinance that was in effect in 2016, not the current ordinance. And it's something I think that we should be noted and brought to the attention of everyone, as I don't think the council has dealt with the project before, or we are going, currently, there is a residence on the property. We will be, our proposal requires that residence to be subdivided out, or a small subdivision to create a separate lot for the current residence, which, as we propose, it will meet all of your requirements for subdivision. It will be greater than 80,000 square feet, it will have the required frontage, and we will have the required setbacks for the existing structures to remain in without requiring any release from your zoning ordinance. And that, that residence will continue to be occupied by the current owner and the owner applicant, Jim Shirencia, who will have an opportunity, who you'll have an opportunity to hear from tonight. He will be the closest person to this project. He has, as he will tell you, he has been residing in this property well through its golden years, and has such, any impacts, anything detrimental that occurs on the site will impact him more than anyone else. Another important point that we want to make sure that all parties are aware of is that Mr. Shirencia, in putting forth this project, advised all of us that he is willing to, at the conclusion of the solar use, designate that this area, this new parcel that we create within this outline of the existing parcel, will be designated open space, that it will no longer be able to be developed into single-family residential homes, that is, of which there's the potential to develop the property into approximately seven different lots, inclusive of the existing structure, which has benefits to the town and infrastructure and other things tonight. As you will see here tonight, and as Mr. your chairman said, we have five different witnesses to present to the board, excluding myself, and they have a range of professional expertise, and we believe will show that this project, that the proposal that we have put forth before the board will be in compliance and will be not be violative of your comprehensive plan, will not have any environmental, environmental impact on the surrounding community for the property itself, and that in granting this change, that you will not have a significant, will be no change in the surrounding community. I think it's important to very briefly touch on the history of the property as a stamp here. The property is a, has been in existence for a long time, unlike a lot of the other proposals that have been before this board, where a new lot was created, or a land grab was put in place to develop a lot specifically for the proposal. Mr. Shirencia has owned this lot in its current form since him and his wife purchased it in 2005. They've raised their family on the lot in its current form. And accordingly, this lot has been utilized for commercial purposes going back, in my view, from the overhead and the aerial photographs, back into the 60s, at different times throughout the last 40 to 50 years, the lot has, different portions of the lot have been cleared, different portions of the lot have been used for different agricultural purposes, and we have a forestry expert who will speak to that as well as Mr. Shirencia. Another important point to get out right here at the front, my belief is that Mr. Shirencia will, and his family will retain ownership of this property. They are releasing this land to a solar operator. They will retain ownership of it, they will retain stewardship of it, and it is their intent, as Mr. Shirencia will tell you, that his family have been in this town for many generations, and is in, his intent to continue to be a good steward of the land and to ultimately return this land to some, to the community via the open space designation. The owner of the land and the applicant will also tell you all of the different steps he's taken to reach this place, that he has taken, and has done a lot of his extensive research on his own to reach this and to allow this presentation to come before you in its current Another important thing, and I think one of the most important things here, is that as many of the same folks are, as many of you were here during the hearings regarding an adjacent parcel, there's been a large oblesive substation placed essentially on two sides of Mr. Shirencia's lot, and they have severely limited what he can do with his lot, as our experts will explain to you today. In fact, his lot is bisected by new large high voltage wires which are serving that substation, which was put in place with the approval of this town, and our planning expert will explain to the board and to the public the ramifications of that, as well as how the findings in that study and in that project are relevant to this project. And as well as, and our planner will also address a number of other commercial uses that are in the site, are in and around the site, which will designate it essentially the area as a mixed-use area. The landowner here has already started putting restrictions on us and on the solar developer in light of other things that are occurring in town, and this will be addressed in more detail, but he has already required that as this project goes forward, that no trucks be placed on Chaysell Road except from the 216 entrance, which as you know, relative to your familiarity with the property, is very close to this property and will not require trucks and large equipment to traverse the narrow Chaysell Road curves, which can be detrimental to all the folks who want to preserve the community and impact surrounding parties as little as possible. And that is just during our short build-out period, which that will be mentioned, otherwise, as the council knows, these projects require very little maintenance. Ultimately, we believe that this proposal is in accordance with the town project's plan and all other town ordinances, and I think it's also important to note that when this project is approved here before this council, and presumptuous, I understand, that this is not the last time that this project will go before a town court. This project will then have to go through a detailed development, plan, and view process with the planning board, where all of the details, the logistics of where, what kind of vegetative buffers, the depth of those vegetative buffers, the specific distances between trees that are required, and other very detailed portions of this project will be flushed out and made sure that the neighbors and all reasonable concerns of the public property owners are addressed. This, ultimately, this array will not be, will be at least a football field away, 300-plus feet away from any roadway or any other, and we believe will not be visible from the roadway or from anyone's property by the time that it is fully built up. Accordingly, with that being said, I'd like an opportunity to present, oh, I apologize. For the record, I'd like to put in three exhibits as full, one of which are a series of packets which were presented to the town clerk a couple of days ago. I'd like to mark that as exhibit one, which is your binders. There are another set of packets that were passed out to you by your court tonight, which are some land valuation studies which are included in the presentation of our appraiser, and there will also be an appraisers report which will pass out later, which we'd like to mark as exhibit three. With that said, I'd like to yield the floor to Mr. Shirencia.
Sounds good, Mr. Sirda.
Not past us.
Adam Karen.
Good evening, I'm Jim Shirencia, 201 Chaysell Road.
Jimmy, please swear in the name.
Yeah, yeah.
Please, if you mind swearing this whole sentence. Raise your right hand, Jimmy Karen.
Do you sound this way with the testimony you're about to give tonight?
Good evening again, I'm Jim Shirencia, Chaysell Road, Asherway. My family's been in Hopington going back, my children are sixth generation that are actually farming the land that my family has on Clarksville Road, been in the family over 150 years, we're still taking care of that. I just want people to understand that I'm not here to ruin any land, I'm not, I'm not really big on development, I like kind of low-key things, kind of quiet, and it's just why I bought the 25 acres on Chaysell Road, because it was a few pieces of land. It was quiet, it was shut back and everything, there were no neighbors. I bought that, I, we bought the house in profit, but I'll be ever seeing the inside of the house. I just fell in love with the land when I saw it, so as far as destroying it, I, I don't think that's true. The reason I'm staying before you tonight is because of the substation. It's been a sway in me, it's kind of changed my life, it's changed my children's lives. And rather than, you know, crying, jumping up and down about it, I figured I'd join, I'd join the system, you know? I was mad at the electric company, I was pissed right off, but I thought about it, and I'm trying to sit on my tree stand one night, looking at this substation, looking at the substation, I'm like, what can I do? And I thought, maybe I'll just join them, maybe, maybe I'll put in like 10 to 12 acres of soil right next to this substation, and I'll be a little bit back of what happened here, you know? I think it'll be a good fit for the town, I don't think it'll really impact anybody. My neighbors, I think if they would speak up, we could get some buffering done that would possibly block their view of the substation, which is really everybody's big problem, not really my sole problem. I love the place, folks. You know, I'm at a point in my life where because of some medical situations, we might have to sell, sell or do something, and I'd hate to see houses there, I don't want houses there. My kids and I talked when they were younger about possibly putting one or two houses back there so we didn't ruin the land, and then since we have a new neighbor, the kids no longer want to look at this land, they don't want to love this property, and they both since moved away. So things aren't working out the way I thought they would, but like I said, I'm just trying to get a good situation, not a bad situation, and I thought when I was done with this clean solar asylum, so, four years ago, the governor was begging for this stuff in the small towns, and I thought I was doing the right thing, you know, with a, with a clean, with a clean fuel system, you know, I didn't think it was such a bad idea, and I thought I'd just join. I don't know, I'm just hoping I get some leniency because of the inconvenience of association, and that's, it's all right.
Jim and Karen, if you guys could explain to us in detail what living next to the substation is like, how it's changed the nature of your property, and what you can do on your property.
Well, for instance, the last storm that we had.
Speaking of Mike Karen, please.
The, instance, the last one that we had, just last week, week before, it was, it was 3 o'clock in the morning, there was a small fire, big pop, so I woke up and I calmed the dog down, was sitting in the living room, next thing you know, there's another big loud pop and a big awful house lit up. Five minutes later, again, five minutes later, again. Nobody else sees this, we do. You know, it's, it's just, when, when it was being built, two years of backup alarms and people shouting and up and down and up, it was, it was hell. It was really, it was a huge burden. And now we're stuck with it. We have sliders in our bedroom, every morning, we open the curtains, there it is.
Yes, hear you.
We go into the living room.
Karen, yes, please.
We go into the living room, there it is. It's everywhere, on the whole back of our house, it's there. We walk outside, it's there. It's, it's there.
Now Karen, do they often perform maintenance activities that, that impact you?
Not often at night, but it, it happens during the day all the time, and more backup alarms, more shouting. It's a burden, and all we're trying to do is honestly make lemonade out of lemons, because we were thrown this, it really doesn't affect anybody else as far as I know, nobody else complains about it. Our, like, our, our children have gone, we hope to have, you know, their houses back there one day with grandchildren, which is actually, we have one on the way, and now walking down the drive to deliver dinner or whatever, good night. I mean, that's not such a bad thing, but we get it back.
Now you and your husband have used this property in a commercial manner before, right? You had a wood study done in 2000, and then since then, you've had, you've used some of those monies to help support the land, correct?
We have. We've, we've logged, we've, when he became ill, we have to, we use some of our logs to pay for mortgage.
Get up close to me.
So when, when he fell ill, we actually used the logs off our property to pay for our mortgage. Since then, things have gotten better, but I mean, we have, we've, we've had horses there, we've done, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have everything there, pigs, sheep, cows, everything, but we've had draft horses there all this time. They're still going to stay on the property, there will still be animals on the property, will be on the property. It's not, this, this project is not going to be visible from the road, it's going to be buffered from our house, it's not even going to be up close to our house. The neighbors, if they can see the substation, I mean, that would be buffered away from the solar project. Everything, it's a win-win.
Is it true that the wires cut right through your property and chopped off that section?
That, they did. They cut right through the property, no matter what.
And those maintenance activities actually occur on your property, right?
It'll always be there.
And you've had trucks out there, crane trucks out there?
And they'll always continue to be there because the power company, it cuts through our, they have a division through our property.
Now, what other kinds of commercial activities occur around your property? Is there a trucking company in the area?
Oh, we have a trucking company at the bottom of the hill, they have both, a boat with air place at the bottom of the hill, I mean, it's always been, there's always been commercial, there was a junkyard at the top of the hill, I mean, it's always been, there's always been commercial all around our house, and we're not looking for the commercial, yeah, we're not building like a Wendy's or, or, you know, any, any kind of something crazy, we're looking for something that's going to be beneficial to us, that will help us keep our property because of the situation at work.
So do you believe that living next to the solar array will be less impactful than living next to the existing conditions on the site, most importantly, the substation?
Everything, yes, everything. It'll be very low impact, very, very low impact. If anything, it'll make things better because it'll have things, it'll have things buffered, it'll buffer around the substation, it'll buffer around the array. There will not be anything seen by our neighbors, by the road.
And it's your intent to retain ownership of this property, right?
It is, it is.
And to have a direct oversight as to how this property is developed and how this solar array is installed?
We will be there, we intend to, yes.
I told my neighbors really hard that they weren't going to be able to see this, this project, and I mean that, I'm not going to get pushed aside by my solar company, you told where the pain is going to go. I told people they weren't going to be able to see it, and they're not going to be able to see it, or else I won't build.
And to that effect, was Centrica the first company to approach you about putting solar on this property? About how many offers you think you turned down before you came to this one?
I actually seeked out Centrica. I started doing research probably four years ago, and there was, there was another gentleman in town that was using, using that for some of the supplies, and he would be up with them, and I started doing nationwide research on them, and they're pretty good company, they've been around for a while, and you know, they're backed up by British Petroleum, which I don't think is going anywhere. You know, I try to pick a company that is going to be here to take the system down, because that, that makes me nervous too, I don't want to be stuck with this thing sitting in my yard, you know, part of the deal is they come and clean it up after. I tend to be sure that happens.
And after that, we intend to donate to open space. When the solar is exhausted, it will be donated to open space for the town.
You really need to get close to the mic, just keep it centered.
Say it again, Karen.
The space that we use for solar array, once that is exhausted after the 20 years is up, it will be donated to the town of Hopington as open space.
So your goal is to, your goal is to make sure that ultimately this property is not, remains undeveloped, remained permanently undeveloped.
Undeveloped, permanently.
You're viewing this solar use as a temporary use, correct?
Correct.
That ultimately the property will be able to be returned to a more natural state?
It will be returned to a natural state of solar use.
Are there, currently, have you and your husband cleared fields on the property over time?
Yes, we have.
So it's not a virgin piece of property?
Absolutely not.
And you have, in addition to taking woodlots off, wood off the site, at one point in time, you had commercial, part of your husband's family's commercial carriage operation, right? You've boughted some horses there?
We've boughted draft horses there.
Yeah, for 10 years, for 10 years, we've had horses there, we've been doing eight rides and nine rides on the house, as, as a portion of my father's farm, Clarksville Road.
So you got a strong history with this property and with stewardship of the property, right?
Yeah, I can do it, Lynn. I need to see it all, build up the houses and wreck, because you know, get it back.
Do you believe the solar array will impact the environment and the surrounding community in any way?
I don't believe so.
Now, have you and Karen taken an opportunity to try to speak to your neighbors directly?
Yes, we did try to have a meeting with the neighbors in solar company and the lawyers to try to cash out some of their questions ahead of time. No, we did show the meeting, it was offered.
And you've had some private conversations prior to the formal application being filed, correct? Have you had an opportunity to speak to your neighbors prior to this meeting being on the agenda about solar?
Yes, my neighbors are very concerned, and I, I'm not going to speak to them, but I, I'm concerned also with the zone changes, you know, I wouldn't want commercial in my backyard if it was, you know, feasible.
You believe that it's feasible though, right?
I do.
You believe that it'll be less impactful than the boat storage yard?
I'm not here to defend anybody else. I don't think this is going to impact anybody, I don't think they're going to see it unless they're flying over.
And you intend to continue to live next to this project, right?
Yes, I do, yes, we do.
And you believe that living next to the project will impact your quality of life in any way, do you?
No, I should hope not, to put solar in every roof in the country.
So to you, this isn't that, this is not going to impact your quality of life, your ability to come and go from your property, your ability to have your children run around outside, your grandchildren run around outside, ability to go out and have a goat on your property as you've done in the past, although Karen says no more goats, and/or to have your dog go outside, or to use your property as you have done in the past.
I, I want to use the property, I have plans, I'm bringing more horses back there, but it's, it's all plans.
We will still have all the use all around our house, it's not going to, it's not going to consume our entire property, this is, we will still have our entire yard, we have another field that goes against the road, our house borders the road, we have, this is all going to be set out back away from everybody, just, you know, from everybody that goes by.
Out back next to the substation.
Yes, it's going to go.
At this point, if the board members have any specific questions they'd like to ask the other applicant?
Any council members have any questions to the Jim and Karen, you guys got?
I think the concern in this town, this town is sharply divided on the solar issue, either strongly for or strongly against, it seems to be no middle ground for the most part, there is some. And the big concern about solar is where it's located, but also what happens when the life of the solar field is no longer there, and the question addressed the health issues, what's going to happen in 20 years into the future, when 20 years is quite a long time, what preparation would you make other than turning over the town? What, you know, contamination or other issues that probably might happen having a solar field?
Well, one of the benefits of having a large company such as Centrica that's backed by an even larger company such as British Petroleum, is you have someone that you're always going to be able to reach out to and touch, and has insurance, has deep pockets if there does become an issue. The applicant in retaining ownership of the property has a vested interest in making sure that there are no environmental aspects, detrimental environmental aspects on that property. In addition, we have a very detailed decommissioning plan, which is, which is included in your packets, as well as a very detailed and extensively planted plan, which will be done over by our forester, to return the property, or to make the property even more forested and have a more traditional and developed forest than it is today, where it's been the subject of commercial logging, done by our study, but it does over time, it does defeat the property for it to then build back up. So it's our position that ultimately, it may take a little bit of time, but you're going to have a property that is going to have a better, a more developed forest, a more contiguous forest, and is going to be a better buffer for the other community, other properties of the community from this large-scale industrial use that is loud and impactful of the substation. So, and the applicant, having their residence right next to it, is going to have a vested interest in being able to maintain the value of their residence and the desire for their children to live.
and the desire for their children to live there, and making sure that this property is well maintained and ultimately returned to a natural state. This project is very different in that because of those characteristics. This isn't a lot that was created out of nowhere from four other lots by a large company in order to stick a solar farm on it. It's not a virgin or relatively old forest that is developed, that isn't, that is working to its normal course of a forest growing up and being built down. This is a working piece of property, agricultural, has a strong agricultural history, has been clear cut, plowed over, and utilized for the benefit, for an economic benefit over, for a long history of time. The, what the owner, the current owner and applicant is trying to do is essentially use, utilize it for a temporary purpose to generate income and protect him and his family one last time, and then move it over into a quiet area and let it revegetate and act as a buffer for the rest of the community from a number of commercial uses that are down in the backyard. So the applicant has a, to summarize, a vested interest in being your most, closest neighbor? A vested interest in what you told, what he said to you, six generations in town? He has other farm property that he, that his family owns in and around the community. He has ties to the community. His role here is, is not to cut and run. It's to support himself and his family and not be a burden on his family like none of us wanna do. And he's taken active steps up until this point to do that, and he's gonna continue to do that. And most notably, I'd point out to you a very topical issue about trucks. Once he became aware of the issues that are occurring elsewhere in town, he made sure to come out guns blazing addressing this issue. Like, we're not gonna drive trucks up and down Chase Hill and endanger people. We're gonna access from the other side. I don't care if it costs you more gas, you gotta do it the right way. So I hope that answers your questions, Chris.
I've known the Terenzia family multiple generations, I remember his grandparents, and I remember following his father, and, uh... And I know the Terenzia family has been, the fittest family, you know, has, uh, his grandmother's been, uh, been long apart.
I'd also like to say that pretty much 95% of the trees that are going to be, are going to be cut down for this, 95% of the trees are written down, we've already cleared the land for reasons that I've said before.
Just to verify, Mr. Karen, you cleared the land not for the expectation of a solar field, but on your normal course that you use, correct?
Exactly. We cleared it for the reasons that we...
Any other questions with Karen and Jim? You guys get close to the mic, please.
When you bought the property in 2005, or 2004? My understanding is that there should have already been an easement there for the high voltage lines? So you bought that knowing the high voltage lines were going to be there? Because those, that's not a new thought?
Yeah, but now they're beside me.
Now they're what?
They're beside me, they're beside me, they're behind me here, beside me.
Okay, so they added mines, how they say that? And then, you're interested? You're interested in donating the land to the land trust?
I was thinking open space, that's what I was asking.
Open space is not a...
I'm giving a conservation easement to the land trust to, to make sure that the land is never developed.
There is no floating open space. It has to belong to some of them. So you're interested in doing that, um, when the solar finishes to have an easement for the land trust? However, you also have an arrangement with Centric's that they have 20 years plus, they could renew for 20 or renew again. Is your lease only for 20 years, or do they have the option of continuing?
I believe there's an option.
That's what I...
For a 12-year or 10-year addition.
Right, so I think they would have an option to continue, so this easement that you are proposing would have to be on the deed. And when you sell the property, the next person would have to do and agree to the same thing.
Yes, Mr. Pavo.
Yes.
It would run with the land.
Permanent, permanent, no worries.
I have three questions. Um, one, on the subdivision, does that have to go to planning separately?
It, it would, uh, it would be approved by planning, yes, it would likely be done as part of an overall application.
And, um, how many b- b- budders are there and what has been their response?
I have, uh, three direct budders that I, that I've talked to. They're not to look about it, they're about changing the zone to commercial. And I know one of us, uh, was questioning his property value really depreciating at the site of the solar family and install. So that's where the proportions are.
And my third question is based on the drawing, you have, um, 25-foot setbacks on the sides, um, which is the side that your, that your house is down on, uh, Chase Hill. And, um, the question is, that's where the others are, yes?
Yes, most of the others are up on the hillside on the higher end of the property.
And so it says, like I said, 25-foot setbacks. Would you be, would change that to a lot further back? You said 300 feet away from the roadway, I don't know where that is.
So the roadway is adjacent to where you're seeing the subdivision? You know, my client's property, that would be the closest portion, or my client's house, it would be the area that's closest to the roadway?
So that's the, the part where the other budders are, you're only gonna be 25 feet setback from their land?
From the, for 25 yards, some of the areas are 25 foot setback from the lot lines. But the dealer, where all of the houses are located, and this is an RRA zone, so it's only not called a location on each of those lots, they are all adjacent to the roadway and are well away from our actual array. So the 300, my client's house is by far the closest house to the unit.
Anything else to the, to Roseanne?
Uh, just one, huh?
Yes, so...
All I'd like to say to the two of you, um, is, um, I grew up on a 130-acre farm, so I can appreciate, um, all the land offers and the animals you put on it. Um, I appreciate your heartfelt comments tonight, uh, appreciate your love of the land, and, uh, it's, uh, and your determination that if this project went forward, that you would practically lie down in your life to make sure it was done properly. So I, I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thanks, Lily. Farah has one more question, yes?
I have one more question, um, from, um, Councilwoman Davis. Um, when you're doing the subdivision at the planning board, are you anticipating subdividing so that you have an odd one property, not an R of R8?
No, it'll be, it'll be over two acres inside.
So it'll be, oh, well, two acres is R1. So it's going to be over two acres, so it's R of R8?
Yes, it's gonna be 1,000 square feet, yes.
All right, and, yeah, 2.1 acres, well, you're barely over that. And then the solar array will be taxed at a commercial rate?
Yes, Mr. Pavo.
So right now it's in, is it in R of R8, or is it in farm forest open space?
It's never been put into farm forest rate for the entirety of my client's ownership, because he's always intended to have the, remain open with those options, so it would most certainly be taxed at a commercial rate.
It's taxed at a commercial rate now?
Currently it's taxed at a residential rate, but as you said, should the array be placed on, it would be taxed at a commercial rate.
So it's, it's taxed not on the, not on R1 rate, it's taxed at an R of R8 rate?
Right, I'll straight down, sorry, K.
R of R8, yeah. And then if you change, you're splitting it, so it will remain as an R of R8 because you're 2.1 acres?
Yes, Mr. Pavo.
On the house, and then the remaining property would be at a commercial rate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for these folks? Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Can I present my next speaker?
Yes, sir.
All right. And that being said, we'll present our forester, Mr. Mark Tremblay, and I'll allow him, uh, to introduce his credentials. And then I think the conclusion of that ask that would be, uh, determined to be an expert, subject to the, any questions that we're gonna have.
Could I, uh, raise your hand, please, sir?
Do you sound this way, that's the truth, possibly, about people who do what's true, then none of us do what's true?
I do.
Can you say your name, Karen?
That's Mark, of the Sioux Tremblay. Uh, I'm a consulting forester, I've been working in and out of it for about 30 years. I've appeared before you several times already on other, uh, projects. I've done a lot of work here in town over the years, uh, mostly with the forest, farm forest open space, the forest land designation program. Uh, I actually met the Terenzias, it wasn't in 2000, as I can remember, but that's a typo, it was 2009, because they bought the property in 2004, and, um, in 2009 I prepared a, a forest management plan for the property. As Jim mentioned, they, they never pursued the forest designation because they weren't sure about, you know, how they wanted to perceive the houses for their family, uh, they weren't even keeping their options up. But anyway, my, uh, role here today, uh, as far as this project, is similar to some of the other projects I've worked on and the report is in your packet in the binder. I basically just do an existing conditions assessment of the, of the forest conditions as is. And, um, and then sort of provide a, sort of a natural history of what's taken place over time, the soils, the topography, the slope, et cetera, and what the, um, the forest conditions are like. Are there any, um, you know, what, what's the relative, uh, health conditions of the forest, et cetera? What succession of stage is the forest in? Um, so, uh, basically, um, a little bit of a history. If you look at the aerial photographs, uh, and anybody can do this online, the earliest ones are from 1939, and the nearest set of maps to look at. The aerial photographs from 1939 show the, uh, southern portions of the property that were, um, park orchard and park open fields at the time. And as you look through the aerial photographs, uh, from the, into the 50s and 60s and 80s, you can see these fields starting to grow into trees. The northern half of the property has likely been, it's, it's old pasture, because there's, there's some stone walls on the edges. So it was likely just, uh, sheet pasture or something, because the land was not all that productive back there. And so that was a more mature forest condition. Typical oak-dominated forest for this part of the world. As you can see in your report, there's a aerial photograph with like two distinct areas shown on the map, labeled stands one and two. Uh, and I basically just considered everything up to the transmission line, the area that would be subject to the arrays. And area one is basically that backland with, uh, oak overstorey. And several years ago, as the Terenzias mentioned, based on its health conditions, they had to harvest some of that timber to over one where they, they harvested the oak timber that was out there. I have some pictures in my report on the residual stand that's left there, basically, uh, smaller diameter, intermediate, formerly suppressed birch, uh, beech and maple, some scats, some scattered oaks. Uh, the southern half of the property is, are those old agricultural fields that have grown up since the 60s and 70s, where there are varying age classes of mostly small diameter trees, nothing much over 10 inches in diameter in these areas, because they're old fields that are revegetating. They're early in the mid-successional phase of, of the, uh, the development of that forest there. So the average diameters of the trees on the property are relatively small. Because they're small diameter trees, there's quite a few of them, uh, but they're all smaller diameter trees, as I said. The overstorey removal of the mature oaks in the back of the property several years ago, only left a few larger diameter trees back in that area of the property. The area of the property where there's some mature trees is not even part of the array, it's off to the, the southeast portion of the property, and there's a spring that runs through that portion of the property, and so there's, uh, that's not being subjected to the arrays, that's not being cleared as part of this. So it's not part of the, my assessment. But that's where any mature trees on the property are located, is in that southeast portion of the property. Uh, there's actually a little open field still, that's a portion of which would be included in the, in the arrays. So there's a past agricultural use of the property. The property was located in a moderately, uh, moderate density type of land use area in town. Like they said, there's some other commercial uses. There's that infamous, uh, substation that, uh, tends to have an impact on any kind of wildlife travel corridor or anything like that valued to the property that might have occurred on that side of the property. And so that's, that's basically the assessment of it. My report talks about the, the presence of the beech bark disease in there. Uh, and it also talks about, uh, some of the, there's been some light impact from the gypsum mud defoliation, a favorite topic of mine as per past, uh, projects. But because of the harvest, it was probably timely, if he hadn't harvested those trees a few years ago, they, a lot of them probably would be dead now. And as you, as you know, driving around a lot of parts of town and the state, that's, that's been the, the, the case in most areas. Then, um, let's see, um... So those are the, uh, existing conditions that's basically, uh, in my forest assessment report. But the other thing I prepared was the reforestation plan, of which you've seen several in the past couple of years. Uh, and again, it's about 13 acres that would be subject to be replanted upon decommissioning in the, the reforestation plan, based on the soil types, slope, and taking into account any future, uh, climatic changes, et cetera. Would, uh, I have some species and some planting spaces in there. And, um, we, I came up with a, a net cost of what that would be in today's dollars, so that they can put up a bond for future re-establishment of the forest. Now, in a situation like this where you have some potential agricultural land with an open space conservation estimate, I would assume that they would retain the option for future generations to grow food on this property if they wanted to. So the reforestation plan would apply on whatever portion of this property is deemed, um, to be returned to forest. It would make sense that, that portion of the property, especially the, the area that's had this head more narrow land, that where there were orchards and pastures and whatnot in the past, could possibly return into an agricultural use. Who knows 40 or 50 years from now where we're gonna be getting our food and how much food, you know, should be grown locally? This would be, that would be a good use. It doesn't necessarily have to be replanted trees, but it could be. And that's what the fund is for. And that's what the fund is for.
Is there any more to the question? Just a few things I want to go over. As a result of the substation, were trees on the lot cleared for vote for the new wires that were going down to the substation?
I don't believe so. I think the existing power line cuts through the northern portion of the property, has been there for some years.
And that requires continued maintenance, correct?
It does.
So there'll be continued cutting on the site for to maintain that corridor?
It does. There would be vegetation management of the transmission line itself, yes.
Up in this is an old place. No unique trees on the site, nothing of any historical value?
Not in the areas that I reviewed that would be subject to the arrays. Off in the southeast portion of the property that's not being cleared, there were several large old maple trees, but I'm.
And they're going to be preserved? They're not going to be impacted?
They're not going to be impacted by this, correct?
And do you believe that the clearing of this site will impact any adjacent sites or any of the tree stands on any of those sites?
There would be no direct impact on any of the budding property if this land is cleared, for any reason.
Fair to say that up until now, the landowners have used the best management practice method to clear their land and to utilize it, bringing you on in two thousand and nine?
Yes. We, based on my review of the logging that took place a few years ago, I saw no negative impacts from the equipment accessing the land and removing the trees. It was, seemed to have been dug during the right time of year where it didn't run up anything or cause any erosion.
So that appears to have, the owner appears to have a history of proper land management?
Yes.
If this were, you don't often get called in on residential developments, right?
No.
So if this were a residential development, you probably wouldn't be involved and probably be clear cut.
That's correct.
But in this case, because there's a replanting plan in place, and because you're here speaking about the benefit, any potential benefit of the forest, it ultimately serves a better purpose than if it was clear cut for a residential development, right?
Well, at least we get to see what the existing conditions of the forest are versus residential development. It doesn't seem like there's anybody questioning, you know, what's the value of the forest that's being cleared for houses?
And there's no replanting plan in a residential development?
Not unless they're shade trees for the houses, right?
At the happy to have my expert answer any questions aboard may have.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Tremblay? Yes, sir.
On your table, where you've picked the density of the tree seedlings that you would put in for reforestation, you picked spacing of twelve by twelve, twelve feet by twelve feet, so you picked roughly three hundred seedlings per acre. And my question is, how did you decide on that? Why couldn't it be more dense than that?
Well, a couple of reasons. One is the, I was, there's a lot of assumptions when you're thinking forward thirty years from now, and, you know, just what kind of spacing would be appropriate, and what kind of species would be appropriate to plant. So the existence of those arrays, the rows of arrays, when they're removed, would create these convenient disturbed rows of spots to plant trees into. During the maintenance, like the twenty or thirty-year period of these arrays, the, this some potential soil compaction between the rows of arrays from just getting out there and maintaining the grass over that amount of time, and if there's any four-wheelers that they use to access these arrays for maintenance purposes, et cetera, would likely utilize the open field areas between the arrays, correct? So when these arrays are actually pulled out, the posts that head up to arrays, you have a disturbed spot. So I looked at the typical array detail design and figured that twelve-foot park would be about the right spacing for these rows of trees to plant. So three hundred trees and/or shrubs per acre is an ample amount of planted trees to establish, and you're going to get native seed that's going to come in onto all these disturbed soils after the arrays are taken out. So you're going to have natural seeding of trees and shrubs that's going to take place over the time, over the time that it takes for the planted trees to get established. So after a few years, you're going to have a thousand trees and shrubs per acre, almost, just from that combination of planted and naturally seeded. Any closer spacing of trees than the twelve by twelve, you're going to, they're just going to grow into each other. And a mature, mature trees, you end up with thirty or forty mature trees per acre. So over time, if in each other, or people go out there thinning their forest stands, which people do every day to harvest wood, firewood, et cetera, you end up with, you know, a thinned-out stand. That's why I think that's three hundred trees or shrubs per acre is sufficient.
What's that, Jim? Okay, pardon.
I think that is a very interesting answer, although I am just as interested in meadow and in open space, and especially if it's good agricultural land, as arable. So I'm assuming that when the Terrenzius would speak with the planning board about reforestation, they would also specifically speak to leaving the land as open according to the uses that the land trust may wish, because it would establish the small animals and the areas that larger animals from the forest can hunt instead of people's backyards. So I am just as interested in the reforestation plan being in conjunction with the land trust, because if anything, I would certainly like to, I would prefer to see meadows and open spaces to establish the small animals, and certainly the trees will reforest themselves as well as if you could be putting in trees. So my understanding would be in your reforestation plan, you would allow for the consultation of the land trust to determine what is best at that time, in twenty or thirty years?
Yeah, I think that's part of, we actually had a discussion with the planning board a month ago, about different projects, about, you know, who's going to put this together twenty or thirty years from now? I'm not, we probably won't be involved. However, there should be a mechanism to pay for a consultant at that time to come up with an appropriate plan based on the needs at the time. So if there's a, if the USDA or Fish and Wildlife agencies all say, hey, we still need a lot of early succession habitat, or we need open fields, or there's a need for growing food, or there's a need for orchards, I mean, I mean, they ought, the plan ought to be flexible. All this does is set, sets a bond about to provide a pool of money to the town to utilize for the improvement and revegetation, and all I'm doing is guessing that the whole thing is going to be replanted thirty years from now. We don't really know how that's going to work out. But that's something that the planning board can go into their approval of a reforestation, and having the flexibility, having the money in there to hire professionals at that time.
I think it's also important, in a rural area, that we allow land available for the bees to pollinate between the many flowers, things that do not grow in forests that actually grow in fields where we have no bees. And that's been a very large problem in the Northeast, that we're having the death of bees. And I would like to see us have a lot of space to allow that, or we will have no bees.
So there have, the habitat benefits that have been shown in other areas, State of Vermont has done a fair amount of work in this area, is they've looked at these types of solar array developments, and there's all sorts of pollinator habitat, there's all sorts of bird boxes and edge habitat on that buffer zone that can be created to enhance exactly the type of habitat they're talking about.
And I have a question. I know you were talking about the, like a four-wheeler or equipment that goes between the rows, but my understanding is that you maintain the rows, maybe three or four times a year. You know, it seems to me, three or four times a year with a piece of machinery, it would compact the soil, any more than bison running across the plains, compact the soil, and they're all a lot bigger and a lot heavier. So I don't think there's going to be any longer amount of compression.
There may not.
But there may not.
There may not. I'm just drawing a panel out between.
We don't have bison, so, I know, it's so important. So the other thing is, there's a very large D-shaped property on the other side of the high voltage line, and I'm assuming you are going to keep that as the dense forest that it is now, because that also is a boundary to pramal fields. This area goes into pramal field, so that will stay.
That's a couple of acres there. Yeah, it's not part of the array.
And that's going to remain the dense forest.
Yes, yes.
So, Mr. Tremblay?
I have a question. Very curious on any of these solar projects with the planning board that can, over, the town helps reflect on with the planning board and the public, and also with the applicant. But the only thing I would ask you is, usually there's a concern in the public that you take a lot of trees out, they provide oxygen, and, you know, the removal of trees of various solar projects, but also, I was impressed by Councillor Powell's remark about pollination and the damage itself. It'd be interesting what facts are presented as we go further, but I'm really interested in particularly what the planning board thinks in, yes, and yes, thank you.
So, you have anything for Mr. Tremblay?
Just, I'm not sure whether it was, whether he were at the planning board when Emily asked the question, why couldn't we use the four thousand nine hundred plus dollars per acre when, to reforest something that was previously eliminated by the pandemic? So why, why didn't we use that kind of?
So I think she was referring, Emily, she was on the planning board, but I believe she was referring to the cost of reforesting the coal field restoration projects down in the Appalachia, and the conditions are so much different. When you reclaim a mine site, you're talking about, you're starting off with barren ground, and you've got much more difficult, you've got to, you've got to do soil enhancement at every spot that you plant a tree. And you don't plant seedlings, you plant, you know, something larger that can tolerate the drought conditions that you're going to end up with. And you may even have to run water lines for a couple of years to irrigate those trees. So that's why the costs per acre are so much higher in that, in that kind of situation. We're talking about apples and oranges, you know?
Yeah, just had a couple of quick things, Mr. Tremblay. I saw in your description of the project from a forestry perspective, you got stand one is eighty-eight trees?
Per acre.
Per acre, okay. And the other one was one sixty-two.
Per acre.
Okay. So, do you know what the difference, the land sizes for stand one and stand two?
What acreage sizes? Yes. So stand two is five and a quarter acres. Stand one is six point seven five acres. So the twelve acres, and then there was about an acre that was that small, open field, no trees.
Okay, yeah, all right, thanks. And then, you know, my other thing is, I know from when the, when the substation was put in, I was involved, you know, with Man, and a few others, and a lot of updates from the National Grid, apparently there's an endangered species that stopped them from pressing through the project at certain points of time, the northern long-eared bat. So I would suggest, if it's not you, it's Steve and Steve or whoever else, maybe figure out, and when they, it was some kind of bleeding situation that they had to stop, and they can't, they can't do anything, so.
So the northern long-eared bat is federally listed, and they know of, and what happens is, what they do is, is they have a hibernation area. Jamestown is the only area, the forts, help fort weather room and all that, you know, those abandoned forts in Jamestown, they hibernate there in the winter. And then the population's like one percent of what it used to be because of that, the disease. Yes. And so what they do is in June and July, they go out into the woods, and they raise their pups in the crowns of trees in the woods, and you've got loose bark, like a white oak and hickory. And so they don't know where these bats may be doing this or not. And they're so rare that they haven't been able to actually detect, and they actually have ways to detect the sound waves of different bats. And they don't know where they are, but just to be safe, they try to avoid any tree disturbance in the woods during months of June and July. So that restriction is in place for any federally funded project, any project that has to meet the federal guidelines. Like if a landowner is under the USDA's Habitat enrichment programs, they can't harvest their trees or do their clear cuts or for wildlife habitat purposes in June and July. So that's just to protect, just in case, on the outside chance, there might be one of these bats.
Right, I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be federally subsidized, I mean, I think it's mine, we have to be mindful.
Well, that's right. The guidelines, the restrictions, the restrictions are a federal thing, the guidelines are a state level thing, where there's no state restrictions on doing this, but it's just a guideline. If you want, do the right thing, then, and if you have trees, mature trees with loose bark, if you have trees that could potentially harbor these, no one that logged the bats, then you should not cut them in the summer. I don't know too many people that like to go out in June or July and work in the woods, but some loggers have to, they live it, right? So they need to sort of plan where they're going to work, maybe they work on a pine stand instead of an oyster stand during the summer, just to avoid.
I just wanted to give you my thoughts, I think.
Okay. Anything else for the council and the applications, Mr. Tremblay?
Mr. Chairman, we could just confirm that Mr. Tremblay was an expert in this field. Just wanted to make sure that it's correctly submitted. Additionally, point out that it is the applicant's intent to practice, utilize all best management practices in developing the site. So if one of those is addressing the concern with the bats and the nature, the timing of the clearing, I think that's something that can be addressed and accommodated in our project. It's also something to point out, it's a planning board developing plan for new thing, but it's our intent to plant a, actually a pollinator mix between the fence and the array, and the interspace, interspaced areas between the arrays is a little bit different due to the maintenance concerns, but in that buffer area, it's our intent to plant a. But in that buffer area, it's our intent to plant a, I believe it has a lot of clover and other things in it that the bees can actually gain pollen from and assist them in rehabiting, re-congrating the habitat coming back to the community. So if there's nothing further for Mr. Tremble, I'll present our planner, Mr. Pimentel. And if you have the same scenario as Chairman, his curriculum vitae is submitted and included in the report. And I would ask that he be the next one to speak.
Mr. Tom, this is what you're about to give. This is the truth.
I do. It was presented that's P S S W O L I M E N T E L. So I respect the members of the council. This clearly is not my first rodeo before the council.
Any please.
I'm sorry, speaking.
Can you hear that?
So this isn't my first rodeo with solar facilities in the town of Hopkinton. A planner, a planner with any grain of salt doesn't work in a vacuum. He takes into consideration the community. He takes consideration the respective regulations. But more importantly, once he's gotten a real experience in the community, he takes consideration of the concerns of property owner, neighbors. Concerns expressed through the various boards and commissions, through the various regulatory documents. And of course, it's been expressed by the council. I put a lot of information to my memory bank over the last several projects. My work was a rather large scale amassing project. I know that's been a concern to neighbors and the council and board members alike. I am a proponent of solar, but once again, you've got to take into respect and consideration of neighbors and property owner alike as well as regulations. So instead of pontificating, I'm intimately aware of your comprehensive plan. I'm intimately aware of your subdivision and development regulations and zoning regulations. I review them thoroughly on several occasions over the various projects. So what I like to typically do nowadays, when someone reaches out to me about a solar project, first and foremost, I say, let's meet with the property owner. Let's look at the site. Let's really consider the characteristics of the property and neighborhood and what potential it could be, the concerns that would be resulting from the neighbors. Typically, the visual invasion. What was unique about this property and neighborhood was A, and it stands out was the substation. In fact, there's an unbelievable reality of comprehensive plan right out of point regarding the substation. It's in my report and it talks about what resulted from the substation and the aesthetics impact and what needs to be done to visually buffer this. And it was interesting when I met with the property owner. It was such a unique project to get involved in because the first and foremost he expressed to me was, whatever I do here, I want to make sure the neighbors are protected. This thing's been an eyesore. It's been an impediment on my life and a quality on my life. They have long-term goals and objectives I have in this property that have now been impacted. So that was first and foremost. And that's when I first sat down and said, you know what? We have an opportunity here that I haven't had with other projects. So I sat with the property owner and I said, would you consider long-term? Because the reality is solar is a temporary use of the property. I know 20, 30 years sound long term, but in the grand scheme of things, it's short term. And we talk about land banking, but we don't know what comes after the 30 years. Because all properties have the underlying zone. In this case, we're imposing a commercial designation. And by the way, for the record, we're only imposing a commercial designation to realize solar. We're not asking for anything else that would be permitted under the zoning code. But there is that long-term usage of property. And the reason why the town of Hopkinton utilizes this methodology is to decide where will solar be appropriately situated, right? Most communities allow my special use in the residential designations. The town of Hopkinton says, look, there may be sites that are appropriate for zoning in our residential apartments. It's in your property, but we want to control them on a site-by-site basis. But there is that long-term usage of the property. And that's when I approached him. I said, would you be interested in putting forward a proposal that after this short period in time, that this property be preserved as a green corridor? Be preserved for agricultural purposes, but it will not be an impediment to the community. There'll be no residential development. There'll be no further commercial development. And what I mean further commercial, I mean an intrusive nation, like similar commercial uses that are surrounding this property, including the substation. And he said, absolutely. That's been my long-term check.
This is an intrusive nature.
I took it as a hint. Yes, but on a short-term basis. We're talking on the long-term basis, this property will be, we will cancel out any of the underlying zone. I know that the council has said that there is no floating overlay for open space. That is something that could be established in accordance with your comprehensive and the zoning regulations you want to. There are a number of methodologies, tools that could be employed in to ensure that the property remains open space in perpetuity, subject to whatever development or requirements you want, both agricultural or just forestation. It could be passive, however you want. There are a number of tools that could be established. But the point is, in the short term, it'll be used not as a fiscal drain, but as a new fiscal revenue stream. And in the long term, it would not be a fiscal drain because there would be no residential development realized. No intrusive commercial development in the long term. The panels will be removed. The property could be reforested to the extent that this council wants, or it can be used agriculture to the extent that this council wants. But it will not be used in an intrusive nature to the neighborhood. When I approached that, I told it, the council said, absolutely, we're on it. And however you want to apply that or meet that standard, I guess that from a regulatory perspective, that'll be locked tight in perpetuity. So given that, I said, wow, this is a real opportunity to realize several goals and objectives of your comprehensive plan. That's number one. Number two, past experience over in this community is what is character of property, what is character of neighborhood. Meaning, what is the impact to the property? And past developments, this council has experience. We're talking about lots of forestation. Speaking to the forester, when you relook at actual the churches that are being removed, it's almost there. It's small farming. There will be more trees realized in the long term if the council decides that president exists on this site. Number two, the surrounding character of the neighborhood is what it is. That substation has caused an impediment to the property. Now, a lot of commercial entities, it's not a purely rural residential character in flavor. That's the reality of the situation. But in the long term, we can actually ensure that it does remain a role by what the actions that we did tonight and what this council wants. So post-pursuit development. So in my professional opinion, I think it's one of the absolute work we found. Solar facility projects are brought to this council's attention. I can fully support it from the planner's perspective. I think it's on point with this citing appropriately of solar facilities. When we seek the permission to rezone, and I believe it's in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And I think it's in accordance with the intent to be realizing the issues.
Happily open up Mr. Pimentel to direct questions from the board.
Okay. Can't forget any questions for Mr. Pimentel. Great Scott.
Here's some notes. One of my concerns about any type of development is that to prevent houses from being built, if you create any public policy based upon houses and creative students, then you virtually approve anything. And I don't think people want public policy dictated by that. Also, you're a planner and you know public opinion and it's hardly no issue. And I've lived in Hopkins 60, 60 years all my life, lived in the Ashway area all my life. And there's no controversial issue I can think of. Even Sheriff Hall, even big box stores can top solar. It's just the way it is. And I know the Chase area well. And that's a very long road in the town of Hopkins in the southern part. And basically it's bars and houses. And plus further down the end, you have what was column in it many years ago and Moley Granite, which is further down close to Route 3. My concern is in the ability of this town on any solar project is how does the town of Hopkins with the staff we have, and we have small staff and that's not to take anything away from our town employees because they have a lot of things they have to do. But we have numerous solar projects that have been approved, exist in Hopkins. And there's always a concern, how do you monitor all these things and make sure that certain things are done with the staff we have to keep on top of everything? And I would appreciate, and the question you pointed out, our town policy, that we don't have like a special use permit in zoning like a lot of other cities in town. But could you just address some of my remarks?
If you talk from a regulatory perspective, I actually was working on a recent solar project in another community, Verbal Meadows. And they had just come up with an ordinance and they're just in the process of updating that one. And this is true of any new field that comes along. Back when I first started my planning practice back in the early 90s, and midnight was the big first time with telecommunication towers. So everybody was pushing forward to get regulations in place, how to control the towers, how to control the towers. And this is true, whether it's the issue of solar or the issue of cannabis was the big issue in every city in town as far as how do you regulate cannabis? What communities are doing more and more now, and maybe it's something they're pursuing as we speak, I don't know. I know you have a regulation in play. And that is is controlling the mass and scale of solar, right? Not only the location. So it's not only the situation of solar, but even in the magnitude and mass and scale of solar. A lot of communities are either controlling it by the number of acres or they're controlling by the percentage of the land. Or they may even further impose a restriction adds to whether it's the percentage of the overall acreage or a percentage of what's deemed suitable for development. So there's a lot of tools and mechanisms out there to control the mass and scale of solar. I don't think communities in general are trying to outlaw them entirely. I've never seen that in a community where they said, you know what, we've had the solar, we don't want anymore. It's controlling the mass and scale. And I would think that would be one option to pursue from a regulatory perspective in this community.
Answer the question.
Was that the question?
Well, I basically asked several questions that you're propositioned. I think that to speak intelligently on a topic like solar and not only, you know, scientifically, you listen to experts. And there's always concern what happens in 20 or 30 years and the town government will change or the personalities that will change. And also, we don't know where the history of funding education is. Actually, it's seriously changed. The property tax is to fund education. I know they're really concerned in the state, maybe not really strong right now, but we might find another way to finance education. So that pressure of property tax to finance education might not be as strong as it is today. That's the potential. That could happen within 30 years. I'm 66 and I've seen a lot of changes in my life now. Also, you know, public opinion and, you know, like I said, the town policy. But I think the concern of a lot of people on solar is that the impact it does on neighborhoods and areas. And it might be more visible in one area, but people definitely have a strong opinion on it. But I know there's people contacting all of us.
What I can offer the community and what I can offer this community in long discussions with property owner, council and the team, was that, and he was pretty sincere about this, was that typically what's concerning factor for solar is typically the visual impact. But there are environmental impacts that could be well testified to. This is not even.
I'll get you answer on this.
There are environmental impacts.
There is no permanent disturbance on the land as there would be from, say, a residential building or a commercial industrial building. There's no infrastructure requirements. You don't need sewer or private LDSDS. You don't need public water, private water, those types of things. So even the topsoil is retained outside as required by regulations. So you can actually, once again, you can even, there are solar facilities out there that are jointly used for agricultural purposes as there is a solar facility. There's numerous studies on that. So from that perspective, once again, it is a temporary impediment on the land from the fact that the solar is on there. It's not a permanent disturbance on the land. So the real impact comes from the visual. Some people don't accept. I acknowledge that. We believe we can screen it. We believe we can block the view of it. We think it will help to offset the visible impact from the substation. And in perpetuity, after the solar facility is gone, it won't be an impediment because it'll be just open space.
Okay, Scott? Anyone else for Mr. Tremble?
So you're a real estate planner?
No, land. We do have an appraiser.
Great. And my question is, what do you feel from your experience over the last several years, specifically where solar is involved in a residential area or by people's homes? What do you find is the issue of the value of the surrounding properties?
We have an appraiser who did an appraisal report.
I'm sorry?
We have a professional appraiser who did an appraisal report. I asked him about valuation.
Do you not speak to that? Do you have any comments about that as a plan?
Yes. Once again, I try to take my feelings. I'm a proponent of solar, but that doesn't mean I'm the one that's going to be living as a back to the solar facility and I acknowledge it to the neighbors. So I always say, some people like looking at it, many don't. So we try to, that's why it is required landscape architect to provide a landscape plan to screen visually a solar facility, to plant as many trees, to have as large a setback, buffering setback, keep the solar rain.
I understand. The question is, do you have any opinion or thoughts on the value of the surrounding properties?
I can't speak to valuation. I don't have the potentials to talk about before solar facility comes in and after what the valuation after the.
Any questions for Mr. Pimentel? Okay, Chairman, also. Thank you.
Happy to present my next witness unless this done, I would like a short break.
She said, she gave you a.
Oh, okay. We're always worried about this. So with that being said, I'd like to present our engineer who will address a number of the specifics of the site.
Good evening. My name is Jason Wall, civil engineer at P S S.
Please somebody, raise your hand. Go to square hands.
You sound list of way of testimony that you're about to give the truth along with nothing but the truth.
Yes, my name is Jason Wall, civil engineer with P S S. So a lot of the things that are going to be discussed, I will keep it brief though. Highlight some of them and skip some of the others. The property, it's a 23.3 acre property. We know where it is in the zoning, facilitation. It's screened largely by what you can see from the aerial photograph. Property slopes to the northeast towards that substation, approximately 10% slope. So it's not, it's a slope, but it's not too steep. We have delineated wetlands on the property. There are a welling complex in the southeastern corner of the property as well as some to the northwest. That's either within the wetland easement or to the north side. Do you want to point the light? There's also an area subject to storm flow, which is southeastern portion of the property that trains into that well. It is located within a natural energy area. You had mentioned that earlier. I'll get to that in more detail in a minute. The proposed project, generally speaking, it's a 3.3 megawatt DC ground mounted solar array approximately. The concept is not everyone. The fenced area, which includes the array and likely potential basin, stormwater controls, et cetera. It's about 13.1 acres. Now if you grasp within. Potential basins, stormwater management, hasn't been designed yet, but conceptually one or two basins along the northeastern corner of the property. Interconnection will be two three days along Chase Hill Road. And as has been mentioned. And as has been mentioned, it will be designed in accordance with the two thousand and sixteen solar ordinance. That includes all distribution lines will be underground within the system up to utility goals for the air connection. All the commercial side yards, uh, setbacks will be met. Those are reflected on the, on the concept plan that you have in front of you. Uh, the chain link fence will be minimum seven feet, uh, twelve. The bottom pad is lifted six, six, eight inches up grounds will allow for some lawn like passage beneath it. Uh, the gate will be locked with a Knox lock and that provides for emergency access. No exterior lighting is proposed. Uh, panels will not exceed twelve feet in height and the vegetative buffer will be maintained. As has been mentioned, traffic, once it's operating, is, really isn't, uh, just visit it a few times a year for regular maintenance. And of course, there's no water, sewer required. We have done some additional studies you're asked to do, uh, one regarding the natural heritage area, as I mentioned before. When we presented this at the planning board, we got, we got some questions about what is the natural heritage area? So we looked into that a little bit more. The way the natural heritage area works is GIS now and there are areas throughout the state that are within the natural heritage area. And that requires further investigation to figure out what actually is within that area. Uh, so we reached out to the realm DPM. There are three different species within the, uh, natural heritage area of the site. It's a dragonfly, the arrowhead spiked tail and two plants, uh, long tubercle spiked edge and fox tail flood moss. Uh, dragonfly reproduces in wetlands and both plants grow in wetlands. So obviously we are staying outside the wetlands and the primary wetland. So those species were not the impact of that project. Uh, we also completed a noise impact assessment and that's near binder. Uh, this is based on a concept plan that is, we, um, is something that we'll, we'll present. Uh, we conservatively ignored the buffering provided by the trees. Uh, it's easier that way. It's, it's much more conservative. Uh, with that analysis, we found noise levels at the property line range from about eleven to thirty decibels. That is within your typical nighttime ambient levels, uh, which means it wouldn't be perceptible. And it is, it's less than the two thousand and nineteen ordinance, which doesn't apply to this project, but the criteria for the current ordinance is forty decibels and it's, it's less than that at the front of your life. So even though that's not, um, that rule doesn't necessarily apply to this project, uh, we meet that criteria anyway. And in the report, you can see the figure that shows where that four decibels limit is, it's well, it's well, it's not even at the property line as well within the right. Now, lastly, we were asked to do a carbon sequestration evaluation. That is also in your packets. Uh, we evaluated the CO2 offset by the array, uh, which is approximately twenty-four thousand tons of CO2 over the twenty-year period. And that's based on EPA emissions, uh, for the northeast and the anticipated solar generation of the facility. The estimated CO2 that would be sequestered by the trees that are there now would only be about five hundred and forty tons over the next twenty years. So it's twenty-four thousand tons that are offset compared to five hundred and forty tons that would be sequestered by the trees over there. And that sequestration amount, uh, that was based on, uh, the foresters study and USD methodologies for those type of trees and the, the huge trees that were cultivated. So that's the brief technical review. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, okay. Who wants to, do you see another question?
So my question is, here is civil engineer, so you can't ask Mr. any questions about the array?
Not about the electrical design, but I can't about the layout in itself.
All right. Then I have a couple of questions about the layout. Um, my plan shows that there will be a road going to the pad.
Yes.
Coming through, um, the, um, Terrence's home area.
Existing area, yes.
And so it's coming straight back and then there will be a pad behind their house effectively.
Yes.
Is there any particular reason why that pad can't move completely away from Chase Hill Road all the way back to the substation? It seems to me there's a road reaching to that, that there is already a road from two sixteen that should be able to, through adhesment that you will discuss with National Grid so that you have an entrance up here by the substation where the pad can be next to the substation, not next to Chase Hill and that the road can be used so that there is no additional entrances from Chase Hill Road under any circumstance.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of that.
The visual redesign.
There's a lot of that. Well, that's, I mean, this is concept, so design, that, that, that's fine. Uh, there's a lot to that. So one, entering the site, I haven't looked that up. I think entering the site from the National Grid side would be a really steep hill. So I don't know.
Is really what?
A steep hill coming up there. There's, uh, right. I'm not going to speak like most of them. So this, right around this, like, you see the gray shaded area?
Yes, I do, yes.
Yeah, that's a rip rap, uh, a rip rap, protected slope.
Just talking about
Yes. So that gray shaded area, that's a, a rip rap, protected slope. So that's not, that's not a slope that you could, uh, um, and then you have the wetlands next to that. So I'm not sure how you would access the site.
Well, I think you could try. Because it makes more sense to use a road that's already, I understand that it's to redesign. But I'm just saying right now, that the road should be the same one that National Grid uses, it's already there. And there can be some kind of arrangement between the two of you, since we're both talking electric. I'd also like to make sure that the connection, the interconnection would be up by National Grid, not by Chase Hill Road. So it's, it's a couple of problems with the positioning of the pad. And if it is moved and there is a way to access from National Grid, then the buffering all the way around, including the Terrence's home is all buffered and there is no access except through National Grid.
I can, Mr. Baba, I can certainly speak to the fact that we would make all efforts to effectuate that. But National Grid is not subject to our control and unfortunately not the council's control. So we, I can pledge that we would make all efforts to utilize that road, to work out an agreement with them. That would minimize, that would effectively minimize the additional entrance. But unfortunately can't make the promise that we would do that. But we can make the promise to negotiate, uh, good faith with National Grid and to attempt to reduce the amount of access ways and to try to consolidate those activities in the lower portion of the site.
And especially the pad, because most of the noise will come from that. So I'd like it as far away from the homes as possible. So I appreciate the fact that you are going to try, but I'd like to try very hard because there's no reason for that pad to be down by Chase Hill when it can be further into the array. And I really don't want an access coming through their property into the array if we can come from another site. Because eventually they may sell that home one way or another. That was, and the property should be independent of that, that commercial area. Because that road is commercial going back to the pad.
I can certainly say to the board that we will make all efforts with National Grid. And if the board would, would have anything that we extinguish them and make all reasonable efforts with National Grid, we can do that. Um, I, I, I can't speak to the pad design. I mean, this is a conceptual, uh, design at this point. And these are issues that will get deeply flushed out at the planning board level. But I see no reason why we can't make a very good faith, all intensive efforts to address these concerns.
Very important issue for me. Um, that is BMP.
That's a best management practice.
A what?
Best management practice. That's a potential base.
That's potential best management practice. I think it should be an absolute best.
Well, there will be one there, but the potential is, we're expecting size it.
That is my main questions on this entire array is unpleasant to the neighbors on Chase Hill. The closer you keep that pad to Chase Hill, it is better to be back at National Grid, which will not care about more and understands that that's where the power is not only coming from, but going to. So anything that can be kept by National Grid, I'm sure there will be some way to work that out. It will make the Terrence's property more valuable, the other people's property more valuable and certainly more conducive to enjoying your residential quality when you put in all those great buffers. Because you will have to address the fact that that road is not commercial going through the residential ROD zone. Which is really important.
Yes. So, Mr. Baba, I think we can certainly adjust and look, we can independently in National Grid adjust the location of the pad. And it's something that is viable, um, without any other interaction from any third parties. So I can promise you that. I cannot promise you with regard to National Grid, other than to make a full and good faith credit effort to address that, those concerns with them and to try to work out a joint, uh, entrance and access way.
It would be very wise to be at a joint, um, entrance and access point because you are, the road would have to be outside of the subdivision. And if it is, it's right next to one of the others. Which is unpleasant to that.
I, I acknowledge that. Um, keeping in mind also that the, once this property is built up or once the facility is built up, it will be accessed for maintenance purposes three to five times a year, four times a year. That doesn't say that those four times won't be, won't be impactful, but it is not as if the truck is going down every day. So we will make all efforts to adjust.
And at this point, that's also the access road for the building of the array, which would be unpleasant to the nearest property.
Yes, and that's why we can adjust the pad location and make all efforts to work out something with the right, the road.
Area for it. Thank you.
Scott, anyone for the civil?
Yes. The, uh, as I remember, uh, now, staying corrected. How we got to the situation of electrical, uh, situation behind the Surendia property was that years ago, there was a plan to put the electrical on River Road and actually High Hill area. And the residents in that area objected to it behind him. So what the town did to work with National Grid at the time is they put it over in Chase Hill area. If I remember. And that was a few to several years ago now, or even maybe, uh, longer. So the town has been willing to work with people. But the situation is that, uh, there's concern about working with different neighborhoods, which is, and of course, you're an engineer, but the, the selling point for the Chase Hill area was it was close to electrical line. There was electrical line down in the River Road area and people down there objected. So that's why it ended up in the Chase Hill area. And I'm just, uh, taking all this in, but, uh, and this could be interesting through the testimony on these things. But things usually happen for a reason, uh, whether it's in the comp plan or whether it's in what instances it is bound or public sentiment or what an applicant wants to do. I just wanted to say that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Sylvia, I'm here for, um, the engineer.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of questions. Um, assuming the, uh, pad, the interconnection area doesn't get moved, how close is the closest the butter to that setup?
The road itself is, is over three hundred feet away. The butter is a permanent solid. I can say over three hundred feet away. Over three hundred feet.
Over three hundred.
How close to the Terrence's? I'm sorry, that's not three hundred feet.
No, that's what the Terrence is, not to the street.
How about to the Terrence's?
To the Terrence's, uh, I don't have that number, but we could, I guess, a hundred feet or so, fifty hundred feet. I don't have that. But the Shrems is not built itself.
Right. Now I'm saying, aside from the Shrems, the closest to butter, how close would they be to this particular setup?
Right, it's so
In terms of the interconnection and the pad?
Right, yeah, it's, it's so I can't, this is, this is the pad. Let's go. This, this, this is the pad.
Yeah.
There's the butter will be here and down here. So it's, it's a waste.
Yeah, but to the property line, not to the house. Twenty-five feet, correct?
Sorry, I didn't answer to you. Can you answer to that? I just answered to me.
I just made sure.
I didn't get a question for the person. I didn't
So we'll, we'll just speak to the chair. If the chair has any questions, we'll be happy to address those.
Do you hear what was the question? Restate the question and answer.
Yeah, the question was, how far is it to the property line? Uh, so depending on the property line, uh,
Wait a minute. We're talking about the pad to the property line. It's more than a hundred feet, yes, though.
Are we talking about the pad?
I think that's what the question was.
Right. There's a lot of questions.
But we have the pad.
Okay. I don't have the exact dimensions of the pad or property, but I would estimate it's roughly a hundred feet.
Roughly a hundred feet, okay. All right. So you mentioned the heritage area and you mentioned three species, the dragonfly and two plants. But those won't be interrupted at all. I guess more important than the planting, right?
Right.
You said that's, is that also, um, in and around the wetland portion?
They're within the wetlands, yes.
Okay. So now this project is not, how close to the wetland will the array be?
We are outside the fifty-foot per acre.
So approximately a hundred fifty feet?
At closest, yes.
At the closest, yes. That's all I had for, um, engineer.
And again, just for the record, we consider, um, Mr. Golden an expert in his field based on his curriculum that he has been seeing to the board. Um, with that being said, we'll present our real estate appraiser who has, uh, who addressed some of the questions that were raised by the board. He also has a, um, written packet, which I mentioned previously, which we would mark as, uh, considered three. Uh, it's a good point to already being in the episode.
Mr. Sirdar, if you don't mind, I want to give Meredith a break.
Anytime you're ready, Mr. Jerry.
Just a minute. We'll tee up at nine, nine, nine PM.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Try that again, Mr. Jerry. Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll present our real estate appraiser and, uh, real estate expert. His name is Ned Kazwell. Uh, extensive list of experience in the real estate field and numerous capacities. Uh, he will go through his curriculum detail with you. I request that upon that time that he be considered an expert of the board.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Do you sound list of way that the testimony you're about to give is the truth alone, or is it nothing but
I agree.
Just search your name for the record, please.
My name is Edward Nick Kazwell. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. While we're out at the break, excuse me, while we're out at the break, I left, uh, my resumes as a real estate broker and as a real estate appraiser, certified general appraiser, which qualifies me to do, uh, wonderful things outside of the residential world as long as, uh, as well as residential real estate. And I am going to answer your question about values, et cetera, at the end of my presentation. Uh, I've also put a package in front of you and we'll try to paraphrase as we go through. Um, the, um, as an introduction, uh, my appraisal qualifications you have. Um, I have, I have, uh, in the past, had various experiences with residential land development, uh, commercial, education, properties, et cetera. Additionally, I have observed issues of stigma and perception and their effect on real estate values. estate values, which will eventually come through a conclusion at the end of my report. I've renewed, reviewed, excuse me, I got a tickle. Reviewed the application before you tonight, as well as the associated reports, labeled introductory statement, the ESS group and land management services, and the communication report, and the land management services of the reforestation plan. I visited the subject site, and I'm familiar with the neighborhood and the surrounding land uses. I have also reviewed the town's zoning statement of general purpose, and specifically to remind you, if sometimes you may go back into the beginning of that book, then paragraph two, to provide a range of uses and intensities of use appropriate to the character of the town and reflecting current and expected future needs. Also, on paragraph 3B, to provide the orderly growth and development which recognizes B, the natural characteristics, topography, susceptibility to surface and groundwater pollution. Paragraph six, to provide for the preservation and promotion of agricultural production, forest, silviculture, agriculture, timber resources in open space. It is assumed here that renewable energy will be added at some point. Paragraph 36, incentive zone, the process whereby the town council or planning board, as may be appropriate, may grant additional development capacity in exchange for the developer's provision of a public benefit or amenity as specified in the zoning ordinance in subdivision regulations. Hence, eventual designation of this parcel as open space in perpetuity. I've also reviewed the town comprehensive plan, and I find on page 44, where it states, photovoltaic solar energy systems in commercial and manufacturing districts also provide renewable energy opportunities. Hence, the need for this hearing for a proposed zone change from RRE to commercial use, converting 15.1 acres for solar farm usage as described in exhibit introductory statement. I also note on page 44 of the comprehensive plan, an explanation of the reasoning for allowing the electric substation to be built as an improvement for the town with regard to supply capacity in aesthetics. This is followed by the January 214 zoning amendment allowing photovoltaic solar energy systems in commercial zones. The subject property, as you know, is 23.3 acres, parcel is located in South Hopkin on Chase Hill, just off of 116 Ashway Road. The lot is in a regular, odd-shaped parcel, which has a single family home and some small farm-like outbuildings on the street side. The ESS group's analysis has designated wetland areas on its northern border. This indicates to me that the area has a high water table tendencies, which may be a hindrance to residential development in ISBS installations. The report also references a drainage channel in the center portion of the property running into an adjacent unnamed stream south of 216 Ashway Road. The subject property abuts a 16.6 acre site owned by Narragansett Electric Company, which houses an electrical substation. Additionally, the reapportion of the subject lot, approximately one-fifth of that particular lot, is encumbered by a 125-foot wide utility easement, which has two parallel roads, rows of high-dent tension poles and wires. Additional abutters include a 42-acre vacant site and three single-family homes on lots of 2, 5, and 16 acres, considered to be sparsely developed. The property is zoned RRE, which is a residential zone allowing one dwelling or a per 80,000 square feet of building lot. The Shurenzia family has a conceptual subdivision plan of the property indicating seven developable lots. Lot one is the present dwelling. Lot three appears to be restricted by the wetlands and swamp area. Lot five, which is the seventh parcel, is the one that's being bisected by a 125-foot Narragansett wide, excuse me, wide Narragansett electric transmission line by the wire. This leaves four unencumbered potential building lots. Additional, additionally, it appears that the lot's topography is not conducive to residential development. An overview of the conditions and obstacles that a potential residential development of this parcel presents indicates that development is not feasible. Other uses that are allowed in an RRE zone is observed, that is observed and are very limited. Basically, the only uses are residential, family daycare, field crops, livestock, and forested nurseries. These uses do not appear to comply with number six of your zoning preamble. For the advent of solar farm development within the country, state, and towns, which presents an opportunity to put the excess land acreage to a productive use, which meets general purpose number two of your zoning preamble, reflecting current and future needs. There's a Providence Journal article that I put in your package that was recently printed about two weeks ago, on November 14th, encouraging additional solar farm installations throughout the state and statewide. Solar is new, and this is by Verge, it's in the Verge, this is a new industry to run on. Solar energy has been in all parts of the country for many years, which will bring us back to valuation and some of the statistics that come with that. Additionally, general purpose 3B, which allows growth and development, that our alternate uses to residential development can be a boon considering the subject's native characteristics to subdivision development. This parcel will be dedicated to open space preservation at the end of the proposed contract and the implementation of the proposed reforestation plan. See also para, paragraph 36, which brings us to incentive zoning, which I believe is what the preamble has, has opened up as far as you're changing certain things within certain zones. It is obvious to this observer that there are no other viable or reasonable alternative uses that are legally allowed within this RRE zone. Please note the comprehensive plan, page 43, stating the potential benefit of renewable energy. It is also my opinion that the proposed solar use will not be a negative use to the neighborhood. It is a passive use, it will not be seen or heard from the Chase Hill road or neighborhood. Most importantly, it will revert to passive open space in the future. It might be a perception that some alternate uses to residential development might be a detriment to property values. In this case of solar farm development, there have been several observations and studies by fellow appraisers around the country that have addressed this issue. I have reviewed three of them submitted here for your review. They are Kirkland Appraisals of a 53-acre site in Melbourne, North Carolina. Also, the other two reports that you have in front of you, that I don't know if you have a chance to review those or not, but they're very spectacular and well done. The Cohen Rethnick Appraisers of five solar sites in Indiana and Illinois. Each of their conclusions indicate that solar farms and fixed solar panels generate no noise, no odor, and less traffic than a residential subdivision. Each of these conclusions indicate that there is no consistent negative impact attributed to proximity to a adjacent solar farm use with regards to home sale processes or indicating any negative value loss. And then the back of your, of your package that I handed out, you'll see the summation pages, I put in two pages from each of the three reports, and these will be summations, which I can go through one by one if you'd like. And I can go through the mythology that they used in order to come up with their conclusions. The, uh, I lost my place again. Okay. Solar farm development, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Solar farm development is new to Bud Island, with little or no time from their inception to observe an in-depth analysis on their effect on property values. In other words, solar is new in Bud Island, and in order to do this kind of appraisal report that these other folks have done, it takes time to, you know, build the site, build houses, or sell houses within that particular range. So that's why they can come up with statistics that are real and meaningful. However, I have observed a single-family over 55 condominium development in the town of South Kingstown, which abuts a proposed 25-acre solar farm. The South Shore Village adult community was conceived and started to develop homes in mid-2016, ranch homes in 1650 square feet to 1950 square feet. There were over 70 sold from the beginning when they started to date. Observing the multiple listing service records of the state and the town records, sale prices in the late 216 when they first started were in the $350,000 range. Or, doing a price per square foot, they came out to $212 per square foot range. The announcement that an abutting 25-acre lot at Canyon Woods was applying for a solar farm development in the early to mid-2018. So in other words, South Shore was started in 216, they started building houses, they were selling in the $335, $350 range. Along came a solar company, applied to the town of South Kingstown, and announced that they were going to go forth to get their permits to do a solar farm. And that was in mid-218. In the back of your packet, I have the statistics page, which is boring as hell, which shows that, that once that was made, the abutting 25-acre lot of Canyon Woods was applying for a solar farm development in early to mid-2018. Sale prices at that time had increased to $440,000 on average, which is a range of $220 per square foot. Since mid-2018 up to today, prices have consistently increased to over $500,000, same square footage, at the 200, that is now at the $290 per square foot range. See attached data for the South Shore Village sales. As an appraiser and a real estate broker, I conclude that the granting of this application will not adversely affect the neighbor's use or quiet enjoyment of their properties. It will not deter the town's goals of general purpose of its comprehensive plan. It will not adversely affect the area's quality of life or its stability, and will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. That its granting will positively and substantially serve the town's objectives and the owner's quality of life. Additionally, that there is no other reasonable alternative use that will put this property to a long and productive utility, that if granted, it will not create a condition that is or will be inimical to public health, safety, morals, and welfare. Respectfully submitted.
Mr. Kazwell, in speaking about this project and development in South Kingstown, could you give us a little bit more insight with regards to the condominiums? Are they in a single structure, or are they more akin to a single-family home suburban development? And also lay out where that's located in South Kingstown? Is it a dense area, or is it a more rural part of town?
This is located in western South Kingstown, near the Charleston line. It is a, is what we consider rural for South Kingstown. And it's a, it's a 230-acre parcel that has layouts for single-family homes, that has two roads that are now developed, there's going to be a lot more development that's going on. The 25-acre parcel is approximately 500 to 750 feet from where the housing is now being built and sold. And it's got the same type of plan that you see in front of you for here. It's going to be buffer. You will see also that the appraisals that is in the package that was handed out earlier has the same or lower height, and others are ranging from 12 to 15 feet in height, and the buffers that they plan to put up will, you know, hide that from the neighborhood. This, this South Shore project is an over 55 adult community. It also doesn't have any numbers that has buyers that have a way of property values and have the same questions that you might have, or the neighborhood may have for value hindrance.
I'll be happy to let the board address questions they have, and then I can come back to you.
If you have a question, then I prefer answering yours.
At this point, that solar lot has not been built.
No, it's not.
And the people who are buying those houses do not, not know what's going on.
They do, because it's in the public now.
But that's not seen.
Just like this. Could I add one thing? That as you read through the appraisals from the Illinois and Indiana.
I thought about the one in Indiana. I don't agree with the, go ahead.
Okay. That it does make a distinction between, and the statistics do show, that once a solar farm is being presented, then there is statistics that show that at that point, even though it's been, it hasn't been built yet, it is still within the range of these values that are not being deterred. So it's, they're wonderful reports. Well.
I, I find it interesting, specifically because we hear a statement made by you that you don't have sufficient information because solar is new in Bud Island, and yet you come out and also say, in your testimony before this council, that you can't predict, or, you know, it seems to be a contradiction in what you said.
That it can't predict.
If I can address that. Mr. Sirdar, I think what Mr. Kazwell is suggesting First, I think what Mr. Kazwell is suggesting is that there's not enough information in Rhode Island to do as comprehensive a study as was done in the Midwest with multiple sites, multiple levels, and multiple different kinds of sites. Now, Mr. Kazwell did his best based on an existing facility here in Rhode Island to effectively come up with a study of that effect and suggest that while it hasn't been built yet, I acknowledge that, Ms. Davis, that there are conceptual plans in place. It's been vetted. There have been public hearings. The parties who are buying property adjacent to it know of its existence. They can't go out there and physically view it, but they are able to go and do plans. So there's a parallel there between the increase and the continued increases in value of property and people's desire to move here to Washington County and a lack of impact of this solar facility being located just adjacent to a big brand-new development. But I defer to Mr. Kazwell.
Well said. The... Well said. You know, in the State of Rhode Island Property Plantation, we have 39 cities and towns. The town of South Kingston and the town of Hopton inside, not population, are the largest towns in the state. So virtually, you're going to hide something. You probably hide it near the property or South Kingston because of the size of those communities. And the other question is, how does this site impact people to all seasons? Because we have spring, summer, fall, and winter, different seasons, where in the fall and the winter months, trees have no leaves on them. So, I mean, even if you have some of these areas that have firms or other things to prevent view, you can still view the site at least from a distance. I just... And I also am concerned about the governor in this North Smithville because the fact of the matter is, the town of Hopton, I think it could be potentially burned, and let me be specific. We have affordable housing requirement. The town of Hopton is very good in reaching the Kepa San goal the state has had. And what concerns me is that all the cities and towns are expected to meet a certain renewable energy criteria that Hopton will not get credit if they use the same standard they're doing with affordable housing in the future. I think Councillor Sharon Davis made a good point in testimony during her comments, previous testimony about the... how well Hopton has done meeting the energy needs of this community. But I'm just concerned about the town of Hopton being burned. And I recognize property rights. The son of a man, my father, was very big on property rights. And I would hope that we could help the Shremids, but we also have to take into consideration the neighbors, the community, and the whole solar issue with Hopton and also with the state in order. Because I don't see the state really recognizing the sacrifice that certain communities have made already with solar. And I'm just not impressed by that. And I'm not... And I am concerned about the fact that the State of Rhode Island Property Plantation is not, you know, recognizing the work of the cities and towns. But also to have testimony, expect a town council which supposedly was made intelligent decisions affecting the future of this town on 60, 60 years, also another 30 years, I might be in for a top of the cemetery or wherever. But the thing is, to make judgment of a serious issue and say, "We don't have enough experience." You can make some judgments. And as a councillor, just recently, we've had a lot of blowbacks on an issue from a previous council because of solar. And the people are very concerned about living next to your lives solar. I mean, because I think all...
I'm sorry, I didn't get that. I can't hear you.
I defer to you, Bob. Did you have a question?
No, I wanted to piece before it.
Mr. Hurst, I respectfully... I'm not quite sure the correlation between minimum housing requirements and solar, but I can speak to the fact that we are doing our absolute best there and we believe meeting the requirements in addressing the neighbors, in addressing the community, and in addressing the neighborhood itself. Ultimately, you're going to take a community that has been transformed by an action of your prior council and the council now has the opportunity to return it back to a more natural setting. Take a piece of property that right now could be subject to development, could put in more houses, which would change the calculation for the minimum housing that the town is so proud of if more development goes in there. And instead, put it into open space. It would not happen immediately, but it will happen over time. So ultimately, I believe that the statements that you made, this project addresses.
My response to that is, in fact, there is a correlation because the state, which sets a lot of rules because the General Assembly has a lot of power, they don't recognize the contribution. Individual cities and towns have a meeting affordable housing goal. Is the state going to recognize all the cities and towns, the 39 states and towns that I know that are different sizes and population and demographics and industry versus rural and commercial? Is the state going to also treat that issue like they treated the affordable housing issue? So that's why it's relevant because the state has all these expectations, but they don't seem to take into consideration what cities and towns have already done in that. That's the correlation.
Could I address a couple of the statements that you began with about carbon trading in South Kingstown and hiding solar presentations, I guess? But the South King... I know nothing about carbon and solar. I guess I've not been involved there. That the South Woods plan on western South Kingstown has been vented, just eventing here at public hearings. It's been on there at the ends of times, the Chalke Times, papers, The Independent. So it's gotten a lot of press as to... because it's been our first solar presentation and therefore would have allowed it. So at this point, anybody that's moving into South Woods or, you know, buying homes today, they certainly know about it and they know what's going to be happening there. Additionally, I'm involved with a couple of other property clients that I have that have marketing farms too for solar production because development and developers have run away from developing large parcels of land. So the alternative use is something else that could be. The only agricultural product that brings an income is hate production at this point. So the... I believe that the state is not going to be controlling what the towns do with solar as they do with affordable housing. I do think that that's a town issue that they're leaving up to the town.
How can you make that statement? We have the governor of the state talking about promoting solar in the state.
But I don't believe she's got anything to say about whether or not you do it or whether you don't.
Promotional.
She's promoted a lot of things, lifelong or anything. So affordable housing was something that started many, many years ago and is controlled by, you know, the state.
Okay. Sylvia, do you have a question for us? Kazwell?
No, I have a comment.
No comments, folks, please. You can't hear each other up here.
I'm not going to talk about politics. The town's being part of our... We've done our part with solar, as Councillor Davis pointed out months ago. The amount of electricity the town uses as a whole, we're within 12% to 15% of replacing that electricity, if you want, by solar. So I think we've done our part. I appreciate that there's still folks in town who may need or want to do solar, but we... I'm not... I can't go along with any more zone changes in residential areas for solar. We've done our part. Thank you.
Are you done with Mitch?
Yes.
I'm not sure yet. Hold on, Mr. Hurst. I think Barbara has a question.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Kazwell, I appreciate your input and I really appreciate the beginnings of the statistics available on this issue because the valuation of the houses is extremely important to everyone all the way around the state. And so I'm really glad. I know I've seen the reports from other parts of the country, but I'm glad that Rhode Island is beginning to find mathematical statistics. And you can take a look at them and you can read them and you can just prove them or not as you wish. However, I would assume since these are over-55 adult communities, that these people have seen solar arrays a lot near them. Some of them may actually live near them. So I think that if they are going to buy a house at $500,000, they aren't stupid and they probably think that they'll be able to resell their house at a higher rate. So my guess is that this particular community we're talking about will be very interesting in future years to see where those statistics go and how they continue to improve or not. But at the moment, it sounds like they're doing very well from $200,000 to $500,000 over just the course of several years. Solar arrays, I have one five hundred feet from my house, and we have no issues with it. It is quiet. It is silent. It is up and running. It didn't cause us any problems over summer, and we had to live with it as they were constructing. So I think that we will always have people who will disagree to say, "It is not a place I wish to live." And/or "It is a place that I know will no longer be developed to houses or restaurants or buildings or tar or retail." And I think that's a valid... But I appreciate that you brought this and I'm hoping that over the course of this discussion that if you find more, you'll bring them forward with Pro and Con. We did just get these reports, so we haven't had any chance to look at them. But I am glad that we're beginning to have the statistics on all levels. Whether you approve of them or not, or want to live near them or not, these are all important to the running of any town and municipalities because if you listen to your children too, renewable energy is important as well. And I am happy we have gotten rid of coal-fired plants and I'm also very happy we've gotten rid of the big plant that was going to be verbal. I think that's great, but we have to start somewhere. So I am glad that we're starting to get this information. It is very important and we haven't had enough yet. So I do appreciate the fact that you are really working to bring that to us.
Thank you. Thanks, Barbara. Chairman, Mr. Kazwell.
I would just ask Mr. Kazwell, as we move forward and look and take these 201 acres as proposed and designate them as open spaces, does that have some value to surrounding properties and to potential purchasers? Do you think that that property will not be... that will not be subdeveloped at some point in time and revert to a natural open space state?
If I understand your question right, if we're looking into the future for 25 years, you're probably right. The open space being perpetuity is something that's definitely... it's in writing. It's going to be permanent. So that would make a decision for a prospective buyer 25 years from now in a miles of fashion like open space.
Maybe I have... Nothing is ever going to change.
Well, 25 years from now, I'm not going to give you any more statistics. If there are no further questions from Mr. Kazwell, as we're approaching the 10 o'clock hour here very rapidly, I don't want to start anything new.
Who's going to win here?
To the council in regard...
Please, no comments from the audience. Please let us speak.
Why are we here? Why are we here?
I announced at the beginning of the meeting... Hold on. I announced at the beginning of the meeting that they may not be publicly comment until the applicant presents their testimony. That's what I said. I gave perfect notice.
It's not up to him to say that.
Joe, I know that. I know that. I realize that. He may have more testimony. I'm not sure. He might have more to say. It's his apple. Mr. Surde, sorry for the interruption.
No apologies needed, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we would like the opportunity to take into account all of that the council has said. We are eagerly to listen to the public and their opinions. And we would like an opportunity to address the comments brought forward by the public, that which we can reasonably address that are related to this specific project. So I defer to the council as to how you would like to go about doing that.
Yeah, hold on. Barbara, you have a question?
I do. Are you going to be bringing an expert with us on the electrical portion?
We can certainly... Our engineer from ESS Group can address the specifics of the electrical portion. Because of this board's knowledge and experience with these applications, we did not want to den... the interest of brevity. We did not want to delve too deep into the specifics of the electrical aspects of it. I can certainly address that at the next meeting. I can have the individual from ESS Group who can speak to the specifics of that here. I'd be happy to do so. We just did not... We wanted to address more of the neighborhood concerns at this meeting than the specific technical science of the project.
I'd also like to have the technical information brought forward.
Certainly, we'll do that at our next opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Barbara.
Okay, thanks, Barbara. Lisa, do you have a question?
I did. Turner Suter, at the beginning of the meeting, provided three sets of documents and he wanted them listed and referenced as exhibits.
Yes.
I'd just like to know in what order and what... Because I know you mentioned a couple of different numbers and I did not catch that.
Thank you for allowing my time.
So if you could go through those documents and let me know which exhibit goes to which.
Sure, I'll do that before, as soon as the hearing is subject to the chairman's decision today. But thank you for the reminder.
All right. We've got about five minutes. I'm not sure if there's any butters here. Again, we're going to conclude at 10:00 a.m.
So if we... So if we don't have enough time to speak right now, will we get more time?
Oh, absolutely. I will not close the hearing until everyone has a chance to speak. I'm asking. So...
Thank you. I'm Emily Schumchena. What's your last name? Schumchena. I'm a butter. I'm also a member of the planning board. We're going mobile, sorry, because I brought some handouts.
And then I just want to bring one thing to your attention. We're only about five minutes. I don't know if you want to wait until the next... Okay. I don't want to shut you off, but I just...
Thanks, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. So thanks for giving us the opportunity to talk. I think that the first thing that jumps out at me about this project, like I mentioned, I'm an alternate member of the planning board. I appreciate the other planning board members that came today. I feel like this hearing has really pulled the legs out from underneath the planning board and that's some of the frustration that we've heard from the council in reviewing this plan. The solar ordinance of January 22, 2019 is pretty clear that it pertains to any project to be constructed after January 22, 2019, which of course would be this project. So I don't believe that this project is applicable to the previous ordinance of 2016. I have provided you all with a handout that has the proper references to the ordinances for that assertion. Also, the purpose of this hearing today is to hear a proposed zone change application. It's not a solar project application hearing today. So while we did hear some information about the project, it's really just at the conceptual stage, as you've all noted. And that's why there's been some lack of specifics about the electrical components and some of the other details of the plan. In fact, none of the butters have seen this plan and none of the butters have been provided the information that was provided to all of you today as part of your finders and packets. So we would certainly welcome the opportunity to review that. But most importantly, the ordinances of our town as written... But most importantly, the ordinances of our town as written, I'm pointing to a thing I don't even have in my hand, because that's how passionate I am about it. Our ordinance is pointing to a process where the planning board hears a proposed zone change and will hear the, and decide on the details of the master plan of the project prior to the town council even getting involved to give an advisory, an additional advisory opinion on the zone change. So again, that's reflected in the document that I showed you, and it references the appropriate sections of the ordinance. That's why we're feeling that we don't know that much about this project, and we have lots of questions. It's because normally the planning board would hear it and approve that first phase of the master plan first before you all even saw it. So you don't have to do the job of the planning board. That's why you've asked us to do it for you and appointed us to do it for you. So I really look forward to readdressing this project in the proper form. Also, I should also mention, councillor Hurst, you expressed you wonder what the planning board thinks of this project. They already did hear this project's initial proposal, and they unanimously rejected it as being inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan. So like I said, I look forward to further opportunity to comment and work on this project. Thanks for giving us time.
Do you want me to wrap? I'm, we're together, but I have my own conference.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I shouldn't have left him alone.
Oh, I'm sorry, Clifford Hale. H-E-I-L. I'm also in a butter to eleven J. S. Road. I'm trying to, I mean, we're obviously very passionate about this, right? This is, we bought the house in two thousand fourteen. We moved to the area specifically because we're able to get two and a quarter acres of property that could then be peaceful and enjoy the rural community that is Hopkin. And I think everybody here appreciates that aspect of Hopkin. And what we're hearing, with all due respect to Jim and his family, I understand his motivations for this. However, I don't feel like two rights, or two wrongs make a right, actually. So he feels that he's been done wrong by the substation put in place, as have we. We're in fact, our house is probably closer to the substation than theirs, although the property line within our house might be. We've been impacted by that as well. My response to that is not to go, frankly, I won't say the word, I won't mess with my neighbors to try to make up for my losses. I think that sort of behavior causes rifts within the community. And I would hope that the town council can try to prevent that sort of action from happening. Don't put neighbors against neighbors by allowing developers to come in here with selling, you know, mineral oils and things like that, making, you know, trying to make it sound like there's no impact to your butters and all this. They're making it sound like they're doing us a favor by putting in a solar panel within twenty-five feet of our property, property line. You know, that's, that's a hard one to swallow, frankly, I think, for anybody. That's it, that's all I want to say for the night.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could simply state that we have offered these neighbors an opportunity to review this plan, and we intend to do that again between now and the next council meeting. So I will make sure that that's publicly aware to all families.
Excuse me, what is it? The material, the material, I hear?
Sorry, I've never been offered. Jim did come over and asked me if we would like to meet with them, but he offered that during workday, first of all. And I also told him I'm uncomfortable talking about this just between you and your lawyers without someone there to actually hear our, our point of view on this, right? Because this is contentious, and how do I know what's going to be said? Beyond that, the last time I saw any map was in the March meeting, I think, was this map? I don't even know if it was this map. I did go, last week, we received a certified letter telling us about this meeting. I, that day, went to the town clerk to see if there was any amended plans. I was told no. I did get the proposal for actually this amendment, and that was all I got. So if you, I don't know who you're talking to or who you've offered that to, but you haven't offered it to me, or I can't speak for the other butters, but, you know, it is, we come here, we're here and all of these plans, and we've not had a, we've not, not only had a chance to see this, we haven't actually had a chance to prepare our rebuttals to a lot of their paid experts. So I think that's part of it too. We need to keep in mind that all of their experts that are coming up here claiming that there's not going to be any property devaluation, that there's not going to be either reforestation plan is this and that. We do need to bear in mind that these are their paid experts that are coming up here to make a case for their project. So with some time, we can try to prepare some of those rebuttals ourselves.
Okay, I'll just, maybe, maybe, Mr. Sir, you can make available any material we've gotten to the butters that may want to review it.
All of this is at the town hall. Everything here is public information, so peonies, also goes to the town hall.
But I'm not sure all the documents that we've gotten is also.
Anything that was submitted here this evening, I will make sure that there are copies in the town hall for the public.
Okay, all right, great, folks. So it's a little after ten, I guess we'll make the motion to continue the hearing. Mr. Chairman, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Can we have a day, a week before this all?
Is it just a public forum?
No.
Continuation of the hearing.
All right, so I'm going to review what we have had you in the next few, couple months. You have regular meeting on December second, that's too late to have it on. You have Monday, December ninth, open. You have Monday, December sixteenth, is your regular council meeting. And you have the twenty-third and thirtieth, those are just prior to holidays. That's up to you how you want to proceed. In January, you have a council meeting on the sixth, there's an opening on the thirteenth. Your next one after that would be the twenty-first of January, it's a Tuesday, and then you have January twenty-seventh. As far as the building and the venue, you're going to be entering into the recreation department's calendar for basketball. So whether or not the Ashway Elementary School, the Hope Valley Elementary School is available is doubtful at this point on evenings going forward. And you may be, only, your only option maybe would be Charnham Middle School.
You need to check with the schools because all the Christmas programs are going on, all the Christmas programs. So I think the schools need to be checked for December, because that's a really busy month for schools.
Well, we need to set a date, we have a ten in the second. Can we try, try for twelve nine?
We can try for twelve, no, we, this stuff. You can try for twelve nine, and I think I can try for, we told the elementary schools, but I doubt that they'll be available.
If I didn't speak to that, some of our experts are suggesting to me that they may not be available on tonight. I apologize for that inconvenience.
But let's, let's just try and set a date in time, and then the after, you get word to the court if we can't base that.
Understood, Mr. Chairman.
So let's try twelve nine, middle school, seven p.m. All right? Good night.